I'd like to call the meeting to order. If we could have a moment of silence. Last one. In accordance with the provisions of the Open Public Meetings Act, public notice of the meeting has been sent to board members. All districts' schools, the Herald News, the Suburban Trends, The Record, The Messenger, Westmuffet Town Hall, County Superintendent's Office, the Board Attorney, Cablevision of Warwick and Westmuffet TV 77, them posted in the administration building. Copies of the Board meeting calendar resolution were provided to all local media, Town Hall, Township Library, and all district schools. Go call please, Mr. Schultz.
Mr. Stojic?
Here.
Mrs. Wire?
Here.
Mrs. Jurgensen?
Here.
Mr. Whitby?
Here.
Mrs. Markbar?
Here.
Mrs. Romeo?
Here.
Mrs. Van Dyke?
Here.
Mrs. Riconne?
Here.
Mrs. Lott?
Here.
Dr. Fenare, your interim superintendent is required. At this time, Mr. Schultz and I will prepare to present the budget through the budget hearing process. So board members, if any of you would like to sit down in the seats so you can see the screen better, please feel free and we'll move with you just a moment. Good evening, everyone. Just make sure I have this on. Good evening. We are here to present the budget as has been approved by the executive county superintendent for the board's consideration this evening. Just on the outset, I want to just thank Mr. Schultz and his team at the board office, all of the administrators and staff who have helped us to craft a budget that we feel is really in line with our district goals, objectives, vision, and mission, and also it's aligned with our district strategic plan. So without further ado. So some of the slides that you're going to see presented here this evening are slides that you've seen before. Others gave a little more detail, most prominently in the Budget Highlights section. So just for the edification of those who have seen this before, alignment of the budget was to our district goals and strategic plan. It was always our intention to impact the classroom last when it came to any budget deficit. So you'll see that we have really paid attention to instruction and program and staffing needs. We were able to reallocate funds within the existing budget in order to really flesh out the goals of the district within those positions that we felt were important to the district. We've also looked at enrollment class size considerations and really maintaining our current level of staffing overhaul. So we've gotten a number of questions. How come we're not cutting staffs this year? And we will demonstrate here we were very, very fortunate with the amount of state aid that we received, even though there was a reduction that we'll talk about later. It was nowhere near the amount that we anticipated losing. So again, we're extremely fortunate and we're able to use our pennies wisely and make sure we put them in the right places. There are program improvements. We've heard Mr. Novak talk about on the arts program, math program, professional development, and a number of other things that are really baked into this budget to help us to make sure that our students have what they need. We've also have made some efficiencies in support services. And that area, you'll notice that especially when we talk about some of the things with our special education programs that I know Dr. Reza has spoken about many times. We have the, there are some positions in our budget that were funded using the ESER grant. And we know that that ESER grant is ending in September. And so what we've done is to absorb the positions that are partially funded through ESER into this local budget. Most prominently, we're talking about .5, so that's a half a salary, for our encore staff members that was formerly funded by ESER is now in this budget. The other half of those positions will be coming out of Title I for the schools that are designated as Title I schools. So we feel that encore is extremely important to the support of our students in reading and mathematics. And so we wanted to make sure that those positions were not lost. Another thing that we had funded under ESER that we absorbed into the local budget is some of our promo purchases. So you'll see that that is also part of this budget. Construction of the budget does include the use of banked cap and a healthcare adjustment that we'll talk about a little bit later. And the tax levy increase will also be discussed. But please know that without debt service, that tax levy increase is anticipated to be 3.1%. And with the tax levy increase, there's a slide that will demonstrate that that is there. We wanted to make sure that we provided to you the information about staffing that was a little bit vague last time. And the reason it was vague was because we weren't sure if the budget was going to be approved at the county level, at the level that we funded it. So because we have that county approval, we have in this budget, again, maintaining current level of staff overhaul. Sorry. But we have been able to add a few positions. One of them is a physical education position that will be part-time at high school and part-time at Macapeh Middle School. What this does, it's amazing how one position, and I say this all the time, you fix one thing and there are lots of repercussions. Just the same as when you take something away, there are repercussions. So by adding this physical education position, we help reduce class size in physical education. Our classes are up over 35. There are six students at both schools. So the position is going to help alleviate some of that. It also, in combination with some other scheduling things that were able to be done, this position helps us to take most, if not all, of the science lab course work out of lunch. So we're really trying to make sure that as many of our students as we possibly can have are going to be in their labs during that same period that they would normally have phys ed during that time. So they'll still get their 150 minutes of phys ed safety a week, and they will also have their science lab period in a place where it's not going to impact their ability to do lunch on a daily basis, or at least eat a lunch the same length of time as other students. So we were able to do that. And at the elementary schools, this means that our physical education staff members are able to be assigned at the elementary level. So any travel that has to happen would be between elementaries, not coming to the middle high school complex. And also, it enables our physical education schedule to put back into the elementary schedule Project Adventure and to have our physical education teachers also help to teach the SEL, Social and Mutual Learning Second Step Program that we instituted at the elementary. So by that one position, we have been able to really restore and or enhance a number of different things. There's another position that we've added, and it's another split position between middle and high school, and that's in Spanish. When the district decided that it was going to phase out Italian, the students coming into the program would want to choose Italian. Majority of them are choosing Spanish. We had no place for them to go other than in the existing classes. And so those classes are also very high, up over 30, 34, 35, 6 students. So that position is intended to help reduce class size a little bit in the Spanish classes that are there now. We also have a few special education positions. Two of them are to provide additional resource, teachers in the elementary school. One of them is a multiply disabled class, but also the possibility of flexing that to an elevated class as well. So Dr. Reza and I were speaking about that just the other day to make sure that that is here. Again, we have already put a assistant principal in at Highlander Academy, and we will be maintaining that position for next year. So with the program improvements that we've been talking about making, I think I mentioned about the language arts and math, and Mr. Novak's spoken about them many times in his reports. But we also, with the new language arts program that is coming in, we're going to have professional development that's going to be necessary. So all of that is also part of some of those program improvements. The Second Step Program is expanding, so that's going to be another avenue for our students to get some of that, let's say health safety. The health safety piece in that 150 minutes is done in a number of ways, and social learning is one of those ways that we can help fulfill that. So that's in this budget. Class size improvements at Macapeh and the high school, I just spoke about. As far as the special education programming and the encore I've already mentioned. So this slide really just gives you a little bit of better understanding as to what some of those priorities have been. When it comes to continued funding for state and county programs, we talk all the time about the New Jersey Student Learning Standards, and we want to make sure that all of our curriculum is aligned to those standards, our math program and its professional development, and new language arts program and its professional development, I've mentioned already. The New Jersey Student Learning Assessment readiness is addressed by our use of I-Rate Diagnostic and Formative Assessments, Concomitant Professional Development, curricular alignment for the middle and high school, making sure that that course sequence is aligned properly, and in general, professional development for all PLE programs. As far as other efficiencies on all schools, we want to make sure that the staffing is truly aligned to the needs of the schools, and I believe we've done that. And under stability and operational improvements, we've all heard, especially those of us in operations and finance at the UGL Window Project, and we want to make sure that that is able to be completed. So that's partially funded, out of stabilization aid and partially funded in this budget. And as far as the high school, we were just talking about those ten schools refurbished. So all of those things are of note. I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Schultz right now to talk about the impact of S2 cuts over the years.
Thank you, Dr. Fenare. As you'll see on this slide, back in 2017, 2018, when the S2 cuts began, our state aid that we got each year was roughly $14,611,000. And since those years, it's been steadily declining, some years more so than others. Coming into the current school year 2023, 24, we had a decrease of $1,194,106 from the amount we received in 22, 23. In total, we had lost $9,121,140 since 2017, 2018 in state aid annually. To 24, 25, I never thought I'd say I'd be happy to only lose $81,000, but our state aid only went down by $81,537. So our state aid was relatively flat for next year compared to this year. So this, we were able to have a more successful budget season and go through the whole process without having to make the staff cuts at the district, as unfortunately had to make over the last few years. Here's a breakdown of last year's adopted budget versus proposed budget for this year. In special programs, that includes the multiply disabled program, learning and language disabilities, the emotional regulation impairment program, the resource room, and the autism, which is our kind program, and the preschool disabled program. So the amount for that category is $7,274,000. Regular education is general education, the regular ed classes, supplies, student teacher salaries. That's a big piece of our budget. That's $19,284,54. That's relatively flat compared to last year, about 0.76%. The tuition, it went down from last year. The tuition number we have in the budget for next year is $3,231,502. The biggest reason we went down is we have an adjustment for prior year tuition adjustment for PCPI that totals $325,533. So we're saving some money there, and also we have some graduations or students who are not going out of district next year, so that helped that budget as well. I don't know what the future holds of PCTI tuition adjustments based on the certified tuition rates, but this year it was fortunate for us. Hopefully, next year we have a similar story. Speech, OT, PT, and extra services for our special education population, pretty similar to last year as well, $1,676,818. Child study teams, that went up a little bit. We had to hire a lot of new staff in the fall, and some of those staff, because they're very highly qualified, and they came with some higher salaries when we hired them. So that's the biggest fluctuation for it. And obviously, some salary increases for next year as well. We worked into it. General administration. The biggest problem, not problem, but why that account went up 4.81%, was our phone system that we implemented a couple of years ago. There was an annual fee for Zoom that was omitted from the 23, 24 budget, which is included in the 24, 25 budget. So that was for dispatch gear, it was $70,000, and the budget went up for $67,000. So that's basically exactly why the account went up. So general administration is $1,877,896 for next year. School administration, the biggest piece of that is the addition to the vice principal position at Highlander Academy. So this budget for next year includes the current vacant position at the high school as assistant principal, and also the position that Mr. Shu moved shift over to the Highlander Academy. So that includes that salary into that number that went up this year. Central services is IT and business office personnel. That number went down this year. Mrs. Francisco was here for many years. She retired, and then I came into her position, so that kind of went down with my salary a little bit lower than she was making. Operations and maintenance, that is relatively fine as well. That's all of our improvements to the district, custodial, maintenance, field. $6,782,188 is the number we have for next year. Student transportation went down. I adjusted the budget a little bit this year because we have less drivers. It's a big secret, we have less drivers. The problem is a lot more runs are being outsourced, so that loss pretty much offset more than what we save when we have our own drivers. So if we can see more bus drivers work in district, that leads to great savings in district and it just makes everything a lot easier with transportation. But that budget for next year is looking at $6,634,700. Employee benefits, that's always a big one every year. We didn't get crushed on rate increase for this year. We actually have a pretty reasonable rate for next year. Part of the problem is a lot of employees have shifted over from the Chapter 44 to the Employee Educator's Health Plan rather than the previous plan. And the contribution requirement is much less for that. If all the employees are still contributing based on their partners from the state, but the Chapter 44 plan is based on percentage of salary, and the Chapter 78 plan is based on percentage of premium. The premiums range on the Chapter 78 plan from 3% to 35% of premium. Meanwhile, the Chapter 44 plan is much more favorable to the employees, 8%. It ranges from 1.7% to 7.2% of the salary. And the salary is capped at $125,000. So anyone making over $125,000, it's capped at the 125, instead of 2%. So that's the biggest piece, and that's actually why we're using a help benefit adjustment that's included in the budget, because we have, over the past few years, obviously, it's helped have to cost increases dramatically throughout the state, throughout the world, basically. So we're trying to use that adjustment to offset some of these costs and these things that we need to offset in the employee benefits. Other expenditures, that includes our Encore Basic Skills Program, bilingual program, co-curricular activities, athletics, our reading specialists, guidance, supervisors and instruction, media specialists, and staff development. It's a pretty wide-ranging group, but it includes everything else that can fit into one of the earlier categories. Facilities, the capital outlay, that went down a lot this year. We're not having as much projects plans. Mr. White, our new building ground supervisor, he just started, he started in February. I was new to the position in October. So we're a little more working through our long-range facility plan, familiarizing ourselves with the district, and we're working on, we'd also like to build up our balance and capital reserve as well. So we have, as Dr. Fenare mentioned, we have the $450,000 in there for the UGL Window Project, which the original $450,000 was included in this year's budget. So hopefully, that'll offset the rest of the cost for this project, and we can get that done next year. Total operating budget is a total of $75,118,929. It's an overall increase of 0.77%. Special revenue budget is, I put in 80% of last year's allotments that we received, so the total grants for that won't include any of the ESER grants, is $1,186,286. And the debt service budget, it went up based on our debt service payments from our referendum project a few years back for the high school and middle school groups. So the debt payments due for next year are $616,000. This chart will show, basically, I was reading through, but here is a different way of showing it. It shows the percentages for each of those categories that I just went through. So you can see the regular education is the largest piece of our education system. But if you combine the special programs, tuition, speech, OT, PT, and extra services, and child study teams for our special education, that totals 19.5% of the budget. Then you'll see general administration, school administration, and central services combined don't even equal 9% of the budget. So it's pretty small relative to everything, all the other costs for this year. Operations, maintenance, and student transportation are roughly 9% each. Employee benefits, as I just mentioned, is our second and largest piece of the budget, which is 23% of the total budget. And the other expenditures that I went into is 6.4%. And facilities and capital outlay, some of our music equipment and the facilities projects we put into, is about 0.7%.
Billy, I'm sorry. For special aid, did you say it's 19.7%?
19.5. If you combine the percentages for special programs, the tuition, which is our out-of-district tuition, speech, OT, PT, and extra services, and child study teams, if you add those percentages together, it's 19.5.
Okay, thank you.
You're up. And here's a breakdown on the other side of the budget, which is our revenues. As you'll see, 83.62% is our current expense tax levy. State aid now is dwindling each year, so this number, 8.42%, there even includes our other aid that we received, but 8.42% of the total budget is state aid that we received, which is nothing compared to what it used to be years ago. Our budget and fund balance for next year, the audit and fund balance from our June 30, 2023 audit is $1,393,63. That's an amount we have to use in the budget. We're using additional fund balance of $1,732,163 to balance the budget for a total fund balance of $3,126,26. Last year, for frame of reference, we used fund balance, that was used was $4,73,500. So we're using $947,000 less fund balance this year to balance this budget. Both of the additional fund balances that we're using is for June 30. Audit allowable adjustment for extraordinary aid. Last year, we received roughly $2.2 million in extraordinary aid, and we budgeted $800,000. It varies how they funded each year, so last year we were very fortunate, but that doesn't calculate into the excess surplus number. It's an allowable adjustment that you can use. So we use part of that, we use that throughout the year for some of our other projects and transportation costs this year, and we're going to use some of it for next year as well if we roll over. And obviously, for some of the supplemental stabilization aid. Last year, in the spring, after Mr. Francisco finished the budget, we received roughly $700,000 of supplemental stabilization aid, which obviously she didn't have time to use last year. And we haven't really used much of it this year, so we're hoping to roll a lot of that into next year for use as well. So last year, for frame of reference, 7.47% of our total budget was strictly state aid. So this year, it's 7.3, 8.42, includes some of our special revenue of allotments, IDA and ESEA. Some of the smaller areas that we receive revenue is administrative tuition. I know Dr. Reza's been working hard over Highlander Academy, so hopefully, we can expand that next year and have some tuition students join the program. Debt service aid, we receive some aid from state each year to offset the cost of our debt payments. Special projects, some of our special revenue grants, smaller grants that we receive. Misalignance is many small things. It's a lot of our pay-to-play fees, things that go fit to the other categories. You have pay-to-play fees that the students pay, parking that they pay for at the high school, any other reimbursements or prior year adjustments, maybe tuition adjustments for prior years, they go in there. Transportation fees, that's a small piece of our budget too. That's roughly 0.05%. That's just reimbursements we get. We have to make transportation jointures. We haven't had many of them in the past few years. And reserve withdrawals, what we withdraw from capital or maintenance reserves. So we kept that in a pretty consistent. So this year, the reserve withdrawal for maintenance reserves is $150,000, which is what we've done in the past. And we're taking $450,000 out for the Window and Door Project at UGL.
So here's our famous salaries benefits and everything else slide. So it's pretty self-explanatory. Salaries are the larger blue portion of this pie chart. 57% of our total budget is in salaries. Benefits costs are 23% of the overall budget, and that's the burgundy color. And the piece that's sticking out in green, that 20% of our budget, is how we run the district outside of paying salaries and health benefits. So everything else that can do, and that's why we say everything else, literally, all those things that we've been talking about and we continue to talk about are in that 20%.
This slide demonstrates a lot of what I just spoke about earlier. This is a different way of showing it. Pie chart here, it shows $19 million is what we spend on our regular education, our special programs. These are all the same numbers that were just on the last slide. It's just demonstrated in a different way. It shows a different way that these expenses are to run the district. So these expenses include the salary, and then we have obviously the $17 million number, which is our health benefit cost that we have to pay each year for employee benefits. On our next slide. Oh, yeah.
I'm going to get our script here. So we've talked about the salary categories, but this gives you another look at the percentages. So when you take a look at teachers, just the teacher salaries, and we're looking at 67.30% of the salary portion, which was that 57% pie chart piece, that blue piece on the pie chart. 67.30% of that is teacher salaries. Instructional aids are 5.16%. Let me move on to non-instructional aids, that's 0.73%, so less than 1%. Coaches, advisors, and trainers, 2.15%. Administration is 6.67%. Our secretary's, our secretary and staff is 3.82%. Operations and maintenance is 6.92%. Transportation salaries are 6.09%. Non-affiliated employees are 1.26%. And then that large, large, oh my, it's just the total. So of that blue pie piece, that 57% of salaries, this is the breakdown of how that works.
Okay, this demonstration, this shows the 20% that Dr. Fenare mentioned earlier of our non-salary expenditures. So the out-of-district tuition that we pay is in PCPI, our special education tuition, it's $3,231,502, which we have budgeted for next year. Our supplies, our in-class supplies and textbooks is $1,61,953. Purchase services, which includes our OT, PT, speech, BCBA, legal services, nursing services, and our audit, KVA for our architect, that's $1,354,967. Some of our other expenses include our phone, internet, staff development, athletics, field trips, and copier leases. They're all rolled into $782,391. Our energy costs, we had the ESIP a few years ago, which helped us tremendously, but since COVID, our energy costs have slowed, so I can't imagine where they'd be without us doing the ESIP. So we have in the budget for next year is $1,122,516,000. And that includes the debt payment that we have for the ESIP that we have, and we have to find out. Our insurance costs went up roughly, they're projecting up for close to 10% for next year. That's our general liability insurance and student access insurance, and things along those lines, workers' compensation. It's $1,240,901. Our facilities, which includes our custodial supplies, our groundskeeping supplies, everything along those lines to keep the facilities up and running, keep the required maintenance, keep the facilities open and comfortable for students and staff. That's $1,180,174. Our technology costs, which are a lot of our subscriptions online, real-time, a lot of our student programs that they use, that's $582,796. Our transportation costs, so outside, the total budget Our transportation costs, so outside, the total budget was over $6 million, but we're paying $4 million for either added district grants and get the contract out. Other costs are to repair our buses, we pay most of our repairs at Canyon House with our mechanics, so we have them doing a great job. So they, a lot of their supplies, the tires, the everything that they work on, plus the added district runs, that's over $4 million, $4,346,700. As you can see, not even close to any of the other categories, is our benefit costs, which is for next year projected to be $17,257,275. That is why we have the health benefit adjustment we're hoping to use in the budget for next year, to try and offset some of those costs. The capital outlay, which is our UGL window replacement project, and some of our equipment and our insurance that we buy for the van, is falls into that category, the capital outlay is $563,131,000. This is showing the same breakdown of the non-personnel costs that I just went through, but just to show a dramatic graphic that the health benefit cost is more than, clearly more than half of everything else that makes up the cost outside of salary costs. So as Dr. Canary mentioned, 80% of this budget is salary and benefits, and when you just take out the salary piece, still more than 50% of it is just the benefits, and everything else falls into the other 20% that we have for all of our expenses, district-wise. And here's the breakdown for the tax levy increase compared from this year to last year. Last year, the average tax levy increase was $235 per average assessed home in the a month smoker. This year, it totals $187.71, which breaks down to roughly $15.64 monthly. The average assessed home in a month smoker went up $600, so that information from the tax assessor's office. The general fund increase is $1,938,983. And our debt service tax levy went up $113,407. Even though the debt service only went up $16,000 for the year, the reason for that is we had savings from our referendum project we did for the roof profits a few years ago, where it came under the bond that I don't receive. So we had over $400,000 of savings that we applied to debt service tax, tax relief over the last few years. We used $100,000 each year over the last four years, unfortunately we used all of that up. So for '24, '25, that's the first year we don't have that available, so that's why the tax levies are going to increase so much for the debt service. '23, '24, there was a healthcare adjustment used, no bank cap used, and the health benefit adjustment was $1,478,000, which, $570,000, which increased tax by 4.4% in total. For this year, we're using a bank cap adjustment from, that wasn't used in '22, '23, and the allowable healthcare adjustment for this year. The bank cap amount is $128,539, that was from the '22, '23 budget cycle, and the healthcare adjustment is $562,769, for a total increase, total percentage increase in the general fund of 3.11%. And overall, including debt service, of 3.27%.
Just to put a little bit of perspective on it, we've shown this slide in previous presentations, but this gives you an idea of the 12-year trend of how the general fund tax levy has been approached. So you'll see that we have everything from a couple of years of 0% in tax levy increase all the way up to a high last year of 4.48%. And we've brought that down a little bit, and to 3.11% to the general fund. When we had those years of lower tax levy increase with no increase, that of course strays the base, and so over time, it was much more difficult for school districts to make that difference up, to keep up with the cost of living increases, negotiated salary increases, insurance cost increases. So we were, again, trying to increase some efficiencies, and we were able to make what we felt was a reasonable adjustment that would also help us to recover from some of that low basis. So, on March 12th, we presented to you the preliminary budget. On March 20th, submission of the preliminary budget went to be at the county office. We received the approval for that, and on April 20th, we had to advertise the preliminary budget. As of this evening, it's why it's highlighted in bold, we now have a county approved budget here for the board's consideration. It's all required by the state of New Jersey, they provide us with a budget calendar, and we have to adhere to it. So we're here for the budget hearing this evening. And by May 2nd, the approved budget must be posted to the district website no later than 48 hours after the public budget hearing and adoption. So that's the state's requirements for all school districts to adhere to. They may not have the exact same requirements for their board meetings, but it all has to fall within that window and that timeframe. So at this time, for members, if you have any questions for us, please feel free and we'll do our best.
I do, I have a few questions. First of all, about the science labs, I like the idea that the kids are going to have a half lunch and then go and do that lab, because that's important. I'm curious as to whether or not we've hired a chemistry teacher, and will that chemistry teacher be providing labs so that the kids are not doing them online?
Yeah. So that was one of our goals. So we have had a good chemistry position this year. It is in the budget, so we are going close to that position. And the hope is with the new schedule that, you know, the pulling children out of lunch will no longer become necessary, but that they will have the opportunity for more physical labs and less online.
Okay, and now I have two other questions. The cost of benefits is extremely high, and I understand that. Is, when the insurers give us a cost for what we have to pay, is that based on the number of claims that they have from our district?
There's an entire calculation that they use that has the claims for our district. Our claims are actually very good. I actually got with Brown and Brown, Brown Reiser is our rep today, and our percentage increase for next year is great compared to other districts he was telling me. He says our claims right now from workers' compensation are much higher, that's why I had insurance one point bit. Some of our other claims, general liability claims are a little higher, but for our overall claims for employees that are putting in, he says generally compared to other districts, we're in pretty good shape.
Okay, and now I have another question. Can we mandate that our stat takes 78 instead of 44, or is that negotiated?
Yeah, it's a question, there's open enrollment each year, which happens in May. The first few years for chapter 44, there wasn't many people who switched. And then I think as a few people switched, then they talked to their coworkers, they realized the plan they worked for them, and a lot of that have switched over. So I think after the preliminary budget hearing, I sent the board an analysis that I did, which is almost 50/50 district-wide now, we chapter 44, chapter 78. So even though the benefit increase isn't ridiculous next year, that the actual premiums are going up, the offset that we need to do in the budget for the health benefit, the contribution from the employees, which is governed by the state, that is impacting for me. So I think Ms. Francisco last year had a 3.2 offset for the health benefit contribution in the current year's budget, and we're going to project for next year's maybe 2.8 at most. And then open enrollment, which happens next month, I'm sure more people are probably going to switch over to the chapter 44 plan.
And my last question. What is your justification for splitting the Spanish position? Why, if the number of kids that are going to be taking Spanish has increased so greatly, why are we splitting that position?
Because we wanted to make sure that we were able to mitigate some of the large class size at both schools. And as scheduling has been happening, right now, both schools are seeing classes up over 30 students, and we're hoping to get that into at least the mid-20s.
I hope so, because as a foreign language, that's not an effective class size.
No, just for clarification's sake, if I could just go back to that, chapter 44, chapter 78 question. The other thing that's required in the state of New Jersey is that as a new employee comes into a school district, they must be, they have to apply for the, unless they don't take our benefits, they have to apply for the educator. And so that is chapter 44. So as new people come on, the idea is that they must take that, so we don't even have a way to, you know, they can't choose chapter 78 or chapter 44.
When does 44 sunset?
You know what, it's, it might be next year, yeah, or ever.
Yeah, they're supposed to, the state's supposed to do a study that they hit their benchmark on savings that the district received. Curious to see how. That took a long time. If they don't hit their savings, they reserve the right to change the plans and adjust it as need be, but we'll see when they come out those numbers.
Okay, thanks.
My first question is, did you say that every elementary school will have Encore?
Yes. So every elementary school right now does have Encore. And the budget funds 0.5 of an Encore teacher in all five elementary schools. What then happens in the Title I schools, and that's the way it is now, but in the Title I schools, the way Mr. Knobak has been able to write that grant, in addition to that 0.5 for the Title I health. We don't know who our Title I schools are yet, because we haven't gotten our grant funding yet from the state, but that calculation will be done. And at the very least, this budget funds 0.5 of the position.
Can I piggyback on you for a second?
Yeah.
Encore is offered at all elementary schools, but is it offered for all the same grades at every elementary school?
I'm going to have to defer to Mr. Knobak.
I'm very with the population size of the building. We also have. Join the show. We also have a different level of students who qualify for Title I services building by building.
So with doing this, will this allow us to let there's, you know, for better lottery equity, so that if at one school, Encore is offered kindergarten through third grade, it's offered kindergarten through third grade at every school?
So that's happening regardless of funding, there's a summer committee getting together to make sure that we have a general approach to how we are covering Encore in these buildings. We've had some discrepancies in the last few years because we haven't had a different variety of funding structures with, especially the Title I and local. Some schools have had 1.5 Encore teachers, some have just had 0.5. So next year, the proposal will have 0.5 Encore teachers in these building, locally funded, and then the schools who qualify for Title I funding will have 1.5. But regardless of funding, the coverage of Encore will be consistent by subject, by grade for next year.
Thank you, sorry.
No problem. Just quick yes or no questions if you think I'm not comprehending. The high school will allow out a PE?
So that's typically the way that it is, it had been structured, so that it's, right now they're scheduled for five days of physical education, one of those days will be a lab period. So that's what we're hoping to return to, because right now, we have a lot of students who are missing all or part of their lunch for that. And, you know, I've always been of the understanding that as a student, and I did it, and I was a student, you can choose to take a class during your lunch if you want to, but I feel very strongly that we shouldn't design a schedule that requires students.
Thank you. My next question, did I hear you say something about flexing the, wait, let me take this back. There won't be a new MND program in elementary next year?
Yes. And that's based on data that Dr. Ressa and his team and the principals have been reviewing, and the flight space comes in, I did use that word, because we are also looking at the need for not only MND services, but LLD as well. So there's still some, it's going to really depend on the evaluations and progress of students, so all of that is pending, which is why we want to have that flexibility.
The tennis court repair? It's a very easy question. Are we talking the tennis courts behind Macabre or under the pond?
Center of pond is the town.
Yeah, the center of pond is the town, so it's on Macabre. Mr. Lang about the price that came out, but even the person who came to look at it said they were booked up July anyway, so I didn't try to do it this year, it was pretty information.
Thank you. This question is for you too, it's really just a clarification, you said the phone system, and you used the word Zoom, and I think most people would assume that Zoom is like the telemeetings that comes free, that you could also get with Google, but that's not how you refer to it.
No, when we upgraded the phone system a few years ago, Zoom was the company that we decided to go with, and they, we ordered all of the phone system, the whole phone system has been up and running for a couple of years now, it's working great, but there is the annual cost associated with running the program. For some reason, that was omitted from my previous budget from oversight, I think because it's the first year that we had the full time, maybe it wasn't in the budget the year before, so it was overlooked, but this year, we had to build for it, and we had to find money for it, and it may include it for next year.
Thank you.
Good. Well, Dr. Canary, thank you very much, both of you, for your staff, sir. Sir, pensive, and I'm sure a lot of blood, certain tears went into this. Couple of questions for you, on the benefits side of things. What percentage of is, we're talking about the 44, the 78 program, medical insurance program, health, health, disability, unemployment, retirement packages, things like that, what part of that is the health?
So the $17 million has fully health benefits. It has full health benefits, the workers' comp and other things was in the insurance category, workers' comp, general liability, that was all in the insurance category as well. So the $17 million number that we're focusing, that is the health benefit cost for dental prescription, health benefits for the year, and that includes the offset for the employees.
That includes the credit, the offset.
Correct.
Okay, yes. So the, and that includes all term, short term disabilities, do we have that in the program?
No, you can get the through the pension program, where employees can buy disability program, that's about the thing of the check.
So $17 million is the health, and then, okay. I'll have to go back to that, the other question. The other question I have was, I see that we're, we seem to be increasing technology costs, which, well, in 2024. The textbook costs, are we seeing those go down because we're migrating to online type stuff?
A lot of it's part of that, and also on the cycles for each year, so last year, I believe, the age program, it was that we, they replaced it last year, but there's no major upgrades on the technology, our textbook replacements for this year. It depends on the cycles, sometimes there's a five-year license for the books, there's none that are up for this year, so there's no need to really budget for a whole lot of textbooks for this year, replacements, but there are a lot of things switching over to the electronic version.
In theory, it makes sense.
Which makes sense, yeah, right, we have some of those.
Okay, I'll come, I'll come back to the insurance question.
I just had a quick question, the second MND programs, are they going to be housed together in the same building? And we have space.
So yes, the, so speaking about the flex, the MND program that anyone needs, the intention is to house it in the same building with the existing MND program. It also benefits us because we have a lot of our preschool program in the same building in April, and it really allows for us to have a seamless transition for those students as we evaluate what their needs are, as they are little ones, and we developmentally want to make sure we do the right by those students in that process.
Where's work with Calvert? Very, very sure it's, I think it's included in other, so sorry.
So on the slide that you were looking at in that budget comparison, Kurt '23, '24, proposed '24, '25, that is included in general administration, is included in that line for the budget account part of the statement. Breakdown from a slide.
Workers' comp is included in the work.
Yeah, it's included in one of those other. So I can get to the actual, they said that for a reason.
Is it a managed program or is it contractual?
No, it's a managed program, which is each year, if they do adjustments, if they have a good year, we're in a, the food insurance fund, and they adjust it each year, so we're with other districts as well, so it factors in their revenues as well. So the whole fund that we're included in, it factors that in. I know we discussed that with some of the insurance costs on some of vehicles, it's the same type of thing there, in fact, they are, and then we receive, if the fund has a good year, we'll receive a refund, and then some years, if it's a bad year, they will receive a bill, usually, we haven't received a bill in quite two years.
Yeah. At last, again, you know, transportation, sorry, we're running 60% of our cost, transportation is on vehicle costs, maintenance, and things like that, and 40% is salaries.
So salaries, well, included in the 60%, it's like the outsourced, running time as well.
Okay.
Yeah, so that's. Yeah, so that's the biggest piece, I think, because those are, it's a big style. So it started around maybe $700, but anybody might cost us $100 a day to do it with all of our cars. We had to sell them. Yeah, salary, it's not salary, yeah, it's a huge.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Actually, I have followed school budget. This was my school budget for many, many years. And this is the first year I have to say that I just sort of get it so smooth. I understand every single thing, every question's been answered. I feel calm, I'm not sweating. And the fact that it's the first year that I've ever seen that Mr. Sitovich doesn't have any questions. I know that he just does a really good job. So I wanted to say thank you. I really, I feel so comfortable this year with this budget. And I can't say I've never felt that way before. So thank you so much for your hard work. Sitovich, I said it right, yeah?
You nailed it.
I nailed it.
I was serious with the view.
So Mr. Sitovich, to my right, yes. What's his last name? Real. Yeah. Sorry, I didn't know what I was talking about.
Thank you.
Okay. And thank you, everyone. You know, the discussion is so helpful to us because we think we've had it right. And then, you know, just being able to participate in this kind of discourse of the board is really helping us to make sure that we, you know, we should feel as confident as we do. I'm going to continue with the rest of the present for tennis report. It's very brief, but it's also a state requirement. So I wanted to make sure that the board and the public are aware that the 2022, 2023 school performance reports were recently released by the state of New Jersey and are available to the public. You'll be able to access these reports from our district website for each of our schools and for the district itself. The school performance reports reflect the New Jersey Department of Education's commitment to providing parents, students and school communities with a wide variety of information. These reports can be used as a tool to help evaluate whether all students have equitable access to high-quality education. The NJDOV encourage districts to use these reports to learn more about our schools and about the district, to start conversations within our school community, to engage with school communities to identify what our schools are doing well and where we can make improvements. It should be remembered, though, that these reports reflect data that is over a year old and that they do not include any of the work in which the district has been engaged in order to move forward. You may recall the presentation concerning assessment data that was given by Mr. Novak on our principals earlier in the school year. That was the data that was presented, the 22, 23 data. In addition, the school performance reports include information about student and staff demographics, school climate and culture, attendance, and many more items. The 22, 23 school performance reports include some changes made by NJDOV. They are student growth data, which has not been included since the 2018, 2019 school performance reports, an expanded computer science course participation, which includes all grade levels K-12, and the results from the fall 2023 Every Student Succeeds Act or ESUP accountability process, which is included for the first time. In June, we'll be reporting out on our programs for the achievement of year two goals of our district strategic plan, goals, objectives, indicators and tasks that we've been engaged in. We've already presented that report twice, gave you an initial and then a mid-year update. And so in June, we'll be recapping and showing, you know, what progress we have made on the things that we said we wanted to accomplish this school year. Most and many of those items are found in the school performance reports. So rather than giving you, you know, the data, we kept our old data. We'll be reporting out on what we've been doing to address that old data. If that makes sense. We always wanted to keep an eye on making a difference to curricular alignment, instructional practice, student achievement, social, emotional learning, school climate and culture, and the health and well-being of our students and staff. And although these school performance reports, you know, they always hit the news and they, and people make a big deal about them, but please know that just for our own school community certification, you know, that data is a year old. And we've been doing a lot of work since that data was gathered. So the timing of the report always has school districts scrambling to remind everybody, yeah, that we've been recording that and all this report we've been doing. And, you know, I just wanted to make that connection. So you're welcome to visit our website. You'll find the link there and you'll be able to access those reports.
Does this report have a comparison to what our students are doing with other districts that are like us?
Uh, no. It has a comparison with the state, but not with the school district.
With the state?
Yeah, it actually really uses the state average.
Yeah.
Thanks. Okay, thank you.
And Ms. Harrison is not here this evening, so we'll skip the student representative reports. So Mr. Novak, Director of Education, we're joined.
Thank you. I'm just going to give a few brief updates. One is of some of the things that Dr. Farnar just looked at with some work that we've been doing. As many of you are aware, we've been talking for the last few months or almost a year now about our intended replacement of our English language program for our students in grades K through five. We are at a critical point now in the process. We are near completion of our first pilot program, which is the Curriculum Associates Magnetic Program. We had a meeting this morning with the representative, with our kindergarten through second grade teachers, and our third through fourth grade, third through fifth grade teachers were able to check in virtually with our trainer just to make sure that they are understanding everything that goes along with this, with this new program. The feedback has been, the feedback has been positive, visiting classrooms and talking to administrators and our staff. They really loved this new program. And we're in the process of beginning the second program pilot, which is provided by Monroe Hill. That program is called Wonders. The materials have been arriving a little bit, starting, starting last week. By the end of this week, our teachers will have everything they need to begin teaching that program on Monday. Again, that's called Wonders. We have a launch training with the, I think it's about 23 staff members who are part of the, who are part of the Wonders training. And they will begin on, they will begin on Monday, May 6th. And they will complete one unit, one unit of study. And they selected that unit so that it is comparable to the work that they would have been presenting to their students at this time in U N R existing curriculum. One of the interesting things that we've seen is the teachers who are using the pilot materials want to continue using it. They don't want to go back to what we've been using. So that's, to me, that's a positive sign. The group of teachers who are currently piloting the magnetic program, I think there's about, I think we have 24, 24 staff members piloting magnetic. And not all of those teachers are going to be the ones who transitioned to the Wonders program. Some of them will be the same, but we have, we have some new teachers who are not part of this pilot doing Wonders. So overall, about half of our, half of our district classrooms K through five will be experiencing these pilot programs. So it's been a lofty and ambitious goal, but it's been fun and rewarding to this point. And we are hoping to have a recommendation for the board for a program replacement at the May 21st Board of Education meeting. And then I will provide a pretty detailed update at our next education committee, which is, I believe, on May, around May 13th. That's my update for the LA pilot. One, one other area I wanted to point out, and I've spoken about this in Education Committee often, but I think it's a good, a good process to point out for, for all and to talk about it publicly, is that one of the things we've been working on for the course of the year is the core sequence at Macabon. And what we believe is that our kindergarten through eighth grade process is really geared towards preparing students for that next level, Algebra I. Algebra I readiness is so crucial to making sure that our high school students, you know, reach that level of success and have that mathematics trajectory that can prepare them for post-secondary careers, the college path, all of those, all of those great things we want out of, out of our students when they, when they come in kindergarten and we want to see them, you know, go on to a great career. This realignment of our Macabon math course sequence is crucial. So I did print out a copy of the, that I'll pass around and make sure you have it for the end of the night. This is the new core sequence that, that really focuses on Algebra I readiness by the time our students leave, leave the eighth grade. And again, we've talked about it a lot in Education Committee. I thought it was important to share with the entire board tonight. And I will pass this around and, you know, continue to talk about it at those, at that committee. So that's it, just my, just my update.
I have a question. I don't know if it's, well, it's kind of related. The kids coming into kindergarten, when you do, when the teachers do an assessment of them, how long is that assessed?
Depends on the assessment. In our, in our kindergarten orientation process, we, our students come in for about half a day. They go through a number of different assessments. They have a, they go through a social assessment. They go through some, some basic skills like, you know, cutting, coloring, identifying letters, identifying numbers, those types of things. So there's a period of time where our administrators, reading specialists, some of our transportation department will come and talk to our parents. While that process is taking place with our parents, the kids are in the classrooms doing activities. And then those activities are all observable, observable tasks. And what I, what I can do is bring that criteria to Ed Committee if you want to see what that.
I just was wondering if the kids were together in a group or they were assessed individually?
It's a little of, a little of both, a little of both.
We do something also with the, with the preschools, right? The preschools do a.
We have a, we have a, for students who, who come from a preschool in our, in town who have access to our forums as part of our pre-registration packet, is a kindergarten readiness inventory that our preschool or our early learning caregivers in the town where our students are coming from fill it out. And it's a checklist of skills, you know, range of, you know, range of, you know, kindergarten readiness.
So they aren't even assessed one-on-one usually with the preschools?
Right. And we assess in kindergarten pretty early on. We don't do that in our kindergarten, you know, do it in our kindergarten orientation screening. We have a, you know, we have a phonological awareness screening called the Toppa. It's also part of our dyslexia screening. That happens, that happens very early in kindergarten with our reading specialists and our kindergarten staff.
I know you think it's four, nine years at the end of Macabon. We're talking about the math dynamics that we're running in Macabon to make sure these kids are ready for high school. Are we seeing, have we gone through a period where we're starting to see the students going into high school more prepared? And is it, is the, is the baton being passed yet or are we not quite there yet at that point?
Just to clarify, we're not, not quite there yet. I think the current sequence is why we know we needed to address the sequence. So the, the current sequence, in my opinion, leads to a acceleration of students maybe beyond what they're, what they're ready for. So this, this is a sequence that focuses strongly on prerequisites of learning, making sure that the basic skills are mastered before moving on to that, moving on to that next level.
This program, we have principals in here, teachers here a few months ago talking about making sure it's a clean, smooth transition.
Right.
And they were going to go on not just math, but also to the language arts and sciences and things like that.
Right.
So we've got the math different place now. Are we, is the other, the other pieces in place as well for going forward? May I ask another question?
I'd say yes, you know, if you want to specifically which, which other pieces. This leads to, you know, access to the appropriate mathematical course for our students, you know, beginning in the sixth grade. We had a process for the last few years, probably the last five or six, right around, just before we moved to the sixth grade to Macabon. Sixth graders could come in and have access to a pre-algebra class. Pre-algebra, which is one of the, one of the courses that we, we won't have a course named pre-algebra going forward. We're going to have a course named Grade Seven Honors. And essentially what that, what that, what that class is, is the combination of seventh and eighth grade New Jersey student learning standards in, in an accelerated course. Pre-algebra has been, you know, just looking and talking around the county, there's been, I guess, different interpretations of what a pre-algebra class is. We're making sure that we're having a process to prepare students for Algebra I that doesn't skip student learning standards in particular grade. And I think that's the process that we've had the last five years where a student, they have been accelerated and didn't get exposed to all of those standards because they did well in, in a previous class.
Okay, so then they're in the fight on the math at that point with the basic knowledge to move forward. We've got the same program took place for English, language arts and science and everything like that. Is that all coming together?
Yeah, I don't think we had the same, only with the same discrepancy in those, in those areas that we've had. I know our previous STEM supervisor did great work in making sure that we had a physics-for-all approach. So we had, we have a process now in high school where every student is taking the path of bio, chem, physics, where, you know, allows all of our students access to, access to physics, which we didn't always have. So I think our language arts and science and history programs were a little, I don't want to say ahead in the game, just, you know, on, on the right path because we didn't have this. Mathematics is one of those, you know, builds on.
Builds on ground.
Yeah, builds on, on prerequisites of learning. And we have an accelerated process that skipped pieces, didn't have a great outcome.
Thank you.
Can I back down to that? Sorry, do the question about that? Danny, when you started in your position, how many students do you think on average do we have going into high school as freshmen in either geometry or above?
I think annually we probably had less than 10.
Less than 10? How many do we have now?
About 30.
30. I have, I'm, I'm going to piggyback on Peter's question because I remember my first two years on the score and math was the biggest push. And again, this year, I, I mean, I don't know where all those positives come from, but I have seen so much math increase, like in all levels, you know? In Macabon, in elementary with that already. So I, I am grateful and confident that I think we are moving in the right direction. And I happen to know a lot of those 30 students that are not entering as freshmen in Algebra I. You know, before, 10 years ago, everybody, you didn't enter high school above Algebra I. You know, everybody was in Algebra I or below. And now we have 30 students in our district above and we can only go, you know, in a better direction that way. So I'm very pleased with the things that have happened in the last few years, the programs we brought, the structure, the opportunities for students. I just wanted to add that to Peter's question because I see it in, in our community.
Novak? All right, special reports and correspondence.
Sure, we have the minutes for the March 12th, 2024 preliminary budget hearing, special action meeting, the minutes for the March 19th, 2024 workshop right there meeting, the March 28th, 2024 special meeting, the April 4th, 2024 special meeting, and the executive session for April 4th, 2024.
Thank you. Could I have a motion?
All right.
Question?
I, I just want to make sure that this, last time this was a little bit of an issue. I just want to make sure that I can abstain from March 19th before we do the. I just want to make sure that I can abstain from March 19th before we do the, the release of it. So I will just want to abstain from March 19th.
I move those meeting minutes.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Okay, I too have to abstain. Mr. Schultz, I need to abstain from March 12th and the April 4th meetings. And yes, to the rest of them.
And I have to abstain from March 19th.
Dan, listen, I need to abstain from the April 4th meetings.
I have no idea what was special because that secret can affect so.
I have to abstain from March 20th. Sorry. Be sorry.
It's long, I get it right.
Mr. Schultz, I need to abstain from March 20th. Thank you.
Okay, the president's report. So just two quick things to move it on quickly. I just wanted to congratulate the National Junior Honor Society inductees that were inducted last week. It was a great night. I expected Ms. Harrison to be here, so I wasn't going to say anything to the high school, but just a quick shout out also to the distinguished scholars, which was that evening also, and all the, you know, the students that received some amazing awards and recognition. And also just want to say a little blurb about the MacAppin play, James and the Giant Peach, yet again, and another great performance by our students. I am just blown away by the performances that I see in this district. It's an amazing thing to see, and thank you to everyone who participated, the staff that, you know, gave so much of their time to those students night after night, day after day, week after week, but the performance was amazing. So congratulations to the students of the MacAppin play. And that's it for my report, and now we'll go on to public comments.
Wait, 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 wait. We forgot something. And I think you, you know, kind of felt funny because your son was involved, but I'm going to say it. The high school band went to Scotland. They did a wonderful job. They were so well behaved. It's another example of how we have to be proud of our arts program. And congratulations to the Highlanders band, you were wonderful. I watched you on YouTube, I watched you, you're great. So, thank you.
That was an amazing trip. I will say my son was there and had an amazing time. And then the next day, they came back at 3:00 AM Sunday morning, and then the pipes and drums were at West Point for the day, on Sunday, for the West Point tattoo, so.
And they got up and went to school yesterday.
Yeah, and then they got up and went to school yesterday. Thank you, Mrs. Dwyer. So, public comments. All speakers will have five minutes to speak until a period of 30 minutes transpires. Before speaking, please state your name, group affiliation, and address for the record. Members of the public who have requested to speak prior to the meeting will be recognized by the chair first. After speaking, all speakers are asked to sign their register, provide it, and give their full name, group affiliation, and their address. All statements shall be directed to the presiding officer. No participant may address or question board members individually. All speakers are expected to have read the statement within the agenda regarding the regulations concerning public comments. Members of the public are reminded that they are legally responsible and liable for their comments. I do believe that we have one person who signed up for the second session, but if it's okay, it would ever.
I was actually going to ask Ms. Lockwood if we could suspend our rules just to allow speakers to speak on anything. That way, out of respect for their time, we can let them run with their lives.
I was going to ask you the same thing, Mrs. Dwyer. So having said that, I would like to invite Ms. Paulato.
All in favor?
Oh, right. So I would like to invite Ms. Paulato to speak to the National Day of Prayer.
I thank everyone for allowing me to speak with you tonight. I was here last year inviting the Pittsburgh Cal. I've got to say, I just am so happy to see how well and how much effort we put in to support our kids because our, our kids are precious to us here in West Milford and are so precious that the National Day of Prayer, as you know, we gather with the entire nation and we join with the community to pray for our country. And, but the education is so important to us here in West Milford that we actually designate an event just for education. So our National Day of Prayer is in two days. We're going to have three events. The first event is at the Veterans Park in front of the town hall at 12:00. We're going to be covering seven categories in all of our events except for the one for education, but I just want to tell you what they are. The country and our town joining with them, we are going to be praying for the government, the businesses in our nation and in our town, education, churches, family, the media, and arts, and military, those seven categories. Because as you know, our country is facing some pretty severe things. And it's really important as our churches. I guess that's something. God, is that you?
It's on the line.
Yeah, it's on the line. So, at, at any rate, there are the three events that are, we're going to be going to. The first at 12:00. The second one is specifically for education. We're going to be meeting at the Board of Ed building outside at 4:00 till from 4:00 to 5:00. We're going to be praying for all of you, our students, the staff, the teachers. And if any of you or any of the teachers too want to come out, we would love to pray for you individually in your needs. And then a bigger thing is here in this building, but over the cafeteria, we meet together with all the churches. Once again, we will have music worship from a combination of all of the churches coming together with their musicians for singing, and then we're going to create a couple of these, these areas of concern for America. But what's really important to understand is it's important to God about unity. And I ask the Lord, I'm like, you know, I, I need a picture. I need a picture of the importance of unity. And I know that sounds kind of strange, but this is what I got. If anybody is a, is a run owner and you have a bullet, inside that bullet are brains. And the higher number of brains that you have on the nap bullet, it's, it's more powerful. The more, the higher the brains, the more powerful it is. And that's the same way that God works. When you have a large unit, the more people that come with like faith and believing and trusting in Him come together, it's powerful. It's more powerful than you know. So we are asking people, if your faith is a God-knowing stone, please come out, support the National Day of Prayer, pray for our country. We need it so badly. We need prayer for our kids. You all, we pray for you throughout the entire year. We have community prayer that meets once a month, the second Friday of every month, and we pray for all of you, our students, and all of these categories as well for our town because we want our town to be successful, we want our kids to be successful, as all of you do, we can tell by the efforts that you put in. We want them prepared for the next step. And so, so the way, and we want you covered in prayer, we love you, we appreciate you, and we just want to get the time to invite you out for the National Day of Prayer in two weeks. So thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak?
I just have a question about the budget. I don't know if I have to call the board office to get the answer or not about it. It's about the tuition. Why is PCTI included under the tuition when you're including special education as well? Because the students going to PCTI are not necessarily special education students, they're general education students. So I was just confused on why they were considered part of that. So I really wish to call the board office for the explanation.
We're getting just, we decided to include all the tuitions together, just as a grouping of all tuitions. I can't either lie to you or break down the special ed versus the PCTI breakout, if you feel like me to.
I just, when you sit and you talk about special education, we're sitting going the PCTIs, like, I understand it's part of tuition, but we are lumping it together as part of special education. It's like, ooh, that's, that could be a little seething. I just studied a commerce action in my career.
Yeah, so just to clarify one, but that tuition category is not necessarily just special, it's not special education tuition, it's all tuitions. So the category, we're sorry if we made it seem as though that was a special ed cost. It is not. It's a combination of general education and special education. Thank you, Mary Jackson.
Anyone else wishing to speak?
Close the comments.
Second. All those in favor? Any opposed? Is there any changes to the agenda?
Okay, so members of the board, you probably saw this in your packet, but I just want to make sure that it's pointed out to you. Under education on page 19, there's a motion that was not in the original budget, and it is number 14 for training and travel. And there's one caveat with that, and not only is the motion new, but from the information we did receive, we have one more staff member's name who's been added. And it's one of our, I'm sorry.
Would you take page 19, motion what?
Motion 14.
Oh, 14.
Yeah, sorry. So there is one more name that we've added, and Dr. Russell puts that information for you. And then I know that you saw the hand carry motions that were sent in earlier today.
I move to adopt the agenda. Second.
All those in favor? Any opposed? Okay, Mr. Lippie, operations and finance, please.
Under operations and finance, I'd like to move motion number one.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, same note, local, please.
Mr. Lippie?
Yes.
Mrs. Dergensen?
Yes.
Mrs. Rakana?
Yes.
Mr. Sotovich?
Yes.
Mrs. Romeo?
Yes.
Mrs. Van Dyke?
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Markbar?
Yes.
Mrs. Lockwood?
Yes.
Okay, under operations and finance, I'd like to move motions number two through six.
Second.
Any discussion? Same note, local, please.
Mr. Lippie?
Yes.
Mrs. Dergensen?
Yes.
Mrs. Rakana?
Yes.
Mr. Sotovich?
Yes.
Mrs. Romeo?
Yes.
Mrs. Van Dyke?
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Markbar?
Yes.
Mrs. Lockwood?
Yes.
Operations and finance, I'd like to move number seven.
Second.
Any discussion? Same note, local?
Mr. Lippie?
Yes.
Mrs. Dergensen?
Yes.
Mrs. Rakana?
Yes.
Mr. Sotovich?
Yes.
Mrs. Romeo?
Yes.
Mrs. Van Dyke?
Same.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Markbar?
Same.
Mrs. Lockwood?
Yes.
Under operations and finance, I'd like to move numbers eight through 11.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes.
Mrs. Dergensen?
Yes.
Mrs. Rakana?
Yes.
Mr. Sotovich?
Yes.
Mrs. Romeo?
Yes.
Mrs. Van Dyke?
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Markbar?
Yes.
Mrs. Lockwood?
Yes.
Hand carry, okay. And then Peter, Peter, you have one hand carry number two.
Five problems.
Okay.
Okay, under operations and finance, I'd like to move number 12 on the hand carry.
Second.
I have a question.
Okay. Rakana?
Without getting, without getting into specifics, is this a student who lives in town but can't have, use our transportation?
So this is a parent contract in which a parent is electing to drive or transport their child to school in lieu of district transportation. So transportation contract has been created.
Can any parent elect this?
No, not, this one is, it's a special education decision, and the cost for the student, they would need a nurse and other services for it. So the parent is willing to drive the student, correct? It's a cheaper option than outsourcing it.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? Same note, local, please.
Mr. Lippie?
Yes.
Mrs. Dergensen?
Yes.
Mrs. Rakana?
Yes.
Mr. Sotovich?
Yes.
Mrs. Romeo?
Yes.
Mrs. Van Dyke?
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Markbar?
Yes.
Mrs. Lockwood?
Yes.
Okay, personnel, student affairs, Mrs. Van Dyke.
Hi, I'd like to move my number one through, can I include any of that? One through 66.
Second.
All right, I'll open it up to discussion. I just want to just say a little something in regards to the retirees, which is number one, number two, number three, number four. I just wanted to congratulate the staff members on all the years of service that you've provided. I just wanted to go through who they were and the amount of years that they've given. So Mrs. Metcalf has given almost 28 years in education, 23 years in our district. Ms. Pine has given 30 years in district. Mrs. McCarthy has given 18 years in district. And Mr. Olero has given 25 years in district. Congratulations, wish you well in your retirements, enjoy, and good luck in the next phase of your life and career. So now I'll open it up to.
Just one second, you said thank you for that, for the years of service.
Yeah, a lot of years. And Mrs. Romeo?
I also, I'll refer that. Congratulations to everyone. And I just want to say that I'm really sad for us to see Jen Metcalf retire. I don't know the other retirees, but she's number one on the agenda, and Jen Metcalf is number one. And she's an incredible teacher, a great communicator, almost prepared. First high school teacher I ever saw send out summer letters to every student, and just always so energetic and wonderful, one of the best teachers I've ever seen. So I'm sad to see her on the agenda, but I'm very happy for her.
And a product of West Milford.
What?
She was West Milford alum.
And she's a West Milford alum, yeah.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yeah, I second that about Jen Metcalf. I've known Jen Metcalf since she was a little girl, and her enthusiasm is inspiring, and she has inspired many students, and many of those students have become history teachers, psychologists, just really productive members of society. And we have Jen to thank for that. So thank you, Jen, for listening.
Mrs. McQuarrie?
So I also think that she should be given.
So I also think that she should be given enormous accolades for her work with the yearbook. She has done... So, I mean, the amount of hours that she put in for the yearbook was so many, many, many more than she was compensated for. And our yearbooks were amazing, and she was excited about it, and she would come in and make you take a picture, even if we wanted to use the one from when we were hired 10 years ago. And she is an amazing teacher, but she also did so much that wasn't part of her salary or her job. And she's just amazing. Big loss, but very, very happy for her.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, local, please.
Mrs. Van Dyke?
I abstain at number 43, and yes on the rest.
Mr. Sutovitch?
Yes.
Mrs. Dergensen?
Yes.
Mrs. Rakana?
Yes.
Mrs. Romeo?
I recuse on 42, 55, 54, yes on the others.
Read those numbers one more time. 42, 55?
42, 55, 55, and 54.
54. Thank you. Mr. Lippie?
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Abstain on number 63 and 65, yes on everything else.
Mrs. Markbar?
Abstain on 43, yes on everything else.
Mrs. Lockwood?
Yes.
Okay, Education, Mrs. Dwyer?
Okay. Turn to that page. Oh my goodness gracious, all these personnel. I know there's 615, okay. I'd like to move items one through 15 under Education.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, local, please.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mr. Sutovitch?
Yes.
Mrs. Dergensen?
Yes.
Mrs. Romeo?
Yes.
Mrs. Markbar?
Yes.
Mr. Lippie?
Yes.
Mrs. Van Dyke?
Yes.
Mrs. Rakana?
Yes.
Mrs. Lockwood?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Sutovitch. Policy.
Under Policy, I'd like to move items number one through 21. Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, local, please, Mr. Sutovitch.
Mr. Sutovitch?
Yes.
Mrs. Dergensen?
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Rakana?
Yes.
Mrs. Romeo?
Yes.
Mrs. Van Dyke?
Yes.
Mrs. Markbar?
Yes.
Mr. Lippie?
Yes.
Mrs. Lockwood?
Yes.
Committee reports, Parks and Recreation, Mrs. Dwyer?
Okay, well, we just had a meeting this past Thursday, but it was canceled. And the meeting before that was wonderful. There's a lot of things going on in the town. I gave everybody the packets of the activities that were going on. They're working hard with our maintenance people to get those fields in order. And I just, I appreciate everything they're doing, but that's the only report I have for tonight.
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Dwyer, Safety, Mrs. Rakana, Mrs. Dwyer?
We have our next safety meeting in...
Superintendent's Roundtable, Mrs. Rakana and Mrs. Van Dyke.
Um, we met with the Superintendent's Roundtable on April 18. Items on the agenda, they brought up the Paradise Mill Plus accident, and they really wanted to know what the protocol is for informing parents about this because of the chaos happening. Parents weren't immediately informed. So Dr. Fornari mentioned that it identified a little bit of a hole in our protocol, and we now know that we need a second and third backup of someone into the link who can send out those messages to parents. Parents were concerned that the ELA pilot may not be long enough. I think it was three weeks each for the two programs. But Mr. Novak assured us that the ELA committee has been working on this for about a year and investigating all of these potential programs, and they feel confident that this is just a final mile. They mentioned a playground grant that Mr. Glenn was looking into, and the funds came through in the second round of the Stabilization Act aid. Drainage will be improved at Marshall Hill and worked on through the summer. And the preschool equipment will also be put in there. They asked when STEM camp registration will come out, and it's going to be the same as in the past. On Friday, 4/19, a message was sent advertising the program with dates. And as in past years, there will be a link with the appropriate information sent out. The committee was concerned that open job postings weren't being posted and that we might be missing out on qualified candidates. But since our budget was passed tonight, I am assuming that they'll go up tomorrow. And May is the month to find these candidates, so we are in good shape. Previously, I had mentioned the book vending machines that they were figuring out implementing in the elementary schools. And the update is that UGL will most likely be the pilot school, just to see how it goes. And then we'll work on that model for the rest of the elementary schools, depending on how that goes. Again, you know, I feel like we bring this up every month, calendar conflicts, and, you know, different schools having things happening on the same night, same time, same day. And it turned out that everybody was looking at different calendars to schedule their activities. So I think we rectified the problem, and everybody will now be looking at the district website calendar. And that would be, it's not the GAG or whatever. It will be the district website calendar. Everybody needs to look at that calendar to schedule anything. As of that day, I'm sure it's going to by now, but there were 182 students enrolled for kindergarten. And that was all from SRT.
Thank you, Mrs. Rakana. The Passaic County School Boards Association, nothing to report. The next meeting is May 29. And Mr. Sevich, the New Jersey School Boards Association.
You'll get used to that last name, I promise you that.
I don't know, I might put it right.
So, in terms of the New Jersey School Boards, there are plenty of webinars that are coming up in the month of May. I'm not going to rattle through the dates, but I'm just going to give you the top things that are being discussed. So, Navigating Education Governance: Insights into CUSAC, Contract Review, and Special Education. Next one is Enhancing Student Success: Strategies and Tools. The following: Best Practices for Policy Development and Maintaining the Manual. And lastly, for the month of May, Empowering K-12 Education: A Deep Dive into Microsoft Copilot. Yeah, that's a great one. So, on May 10, Friday, May 10, is the NJSBA Spring Conference entitled Student Success: School Safety and Public Relations. There is no time set yet, but it will be at Mercer County College, and it's usually going a day, probably around 10 o'clock to 3 o'clock. If you can attend, as always, I'd recommend it. And last for the month of May, there is a delegate assembly on May 18, and this is where the school boards of the entire state get together and go on a number of advocating policies that are suggested either by school districts that have approved a resolution of their own to submit to the school board, or are being brought up by the School Board Association to advocate on behalf of students throughout the state. So I may be able to make it, but if I can't, if somebody could stay in my seat to be a part of it. It's a great experience. It's very formal. The decorum is something that we could all really, all meaning any board can learn from because of how well it's organized. So keep you up to date on that and the policies that have been brought up for... Yes, Mrs. Dwyer?
Mr. Sutovitch?
Aye, I nailed it.
Where does this ring out?
That is also at the Mercer County College Conference.
So...
The date is May 18.
So I could sign up for that virtually. Do you typically do the virtual or the in-person?
The voting has to be done in person.
Yeah.
So you could obviously participate virtually, but in order to be involved in the voting process, you must be there.
Yeah.
Do they give you lunch?
Always. The New Jersey School Boards Association always gives you food.
And that's it for school boards?
That is it. And Novak is like a report.
Okay. So Technology Oversight, Mrs. Lippie and Mrs. McQuarrie?
Hey, Technology Oversight. We met with Mr. Winston, Mr. Novak, Dr. Fornari, and there was someone else.
I can make you super technical.
There you go. Good meeting. Very open, very honest as to what's going on. Basic highlights of the meeting. We are getting ready to switch to this next year. Incoming freshmen are going to be switched to 11-inch Chromebooks versus 14-inch Chromebooks. This way, district-wide, with 11 inches going around, it'll help save us money in repairs, help save us money keeping things consistent, things like that. There is a thought process for making the insurance, the $25 payment for insurance every year as a mandatory with a possible $50 per family top dollar. So if you have two students or eight students, it'll be total $50. Also along with that, we're talking about a particular family that goes for a year or two without damaging their machine, getting a free year or so of insurance on that. The $25 pay is very minimal in terms of the cost to repair it. Number one, probably have with the Chromebooks is a screen. That can run over $200, $300. So just on that first pay, you're covered on that. We're also looking at trying to finance it through other means if those students cannot get a little for the issue money. The awareness training has been completed. It's gone through all the staff. The bill before your Fisher, for those on the board, if you see your email, there's a little fish hook on the side now. That helps find some phishing emails. And that actually, a day, I found one on my email that I received supposedly from Miss Lockwood, asking me to go out to Walmart and buy gift cards because you weren't in the office. Possibly get the money in time for the district. It's just one of those fun emails. But it's a good thing to have to teach, to instruct teachers and industry people how to avoid phishing scams and how to avoid things that could, in the long run, cost us a lot of money. It's also a good way to also keep power, online insurance, or cyber insurance pretty much down if we have this training going on. Currently, the website, we talked about this in one of the meetings, but our current platform that we're using, Blackboard, has been acquired. This is our content management service. So we're going to be looking, we have a runway to look at other possibilities, other platforms that we can use that we need to be able to pool everything that we do all through one type of a service. It's going to cost money, but hopefully the cost is a little less. Other things in the more physical sense that are going on. Our current plan is right now to update some of the last few classrooms throughout the district that need cabling and hardware in some of the classrooms. They just, it doesn't run through. The good news is, it looks like we have a little bit of E-rate funds, so it'll basically cost us about 50% of the actual cost. We'll save some money there. There is, Mr. Novak and the team at High School are looking at updating our computer lab with furniture. Furniture that can be used with today's, what these kids are walking in with. They walk in with a Chromebook, and they have their computer in. Maybe they have an open, things like that. But the way that they're situated, it's just not coherent, it's not conducive to doing. That's what we're looking at, trying to refund that, try to rebuild that, try to redo wiring. There's currently some safety issues with some wiring, the way that boxes are not working for them, things like that. And Mr. Novak needs to be able to, at least he said it was Estrograt funds are hooked over. Are part of that, so we may be able to actually get that with federal funding. That's a good thing. Last on the list, we've got some upgrades to cameras over Atshua. Should help us with our early warning jockers when they were in the building, doing things they shouldn't be doing. And Mr. Winston's team was able to mount one of the new cameras for the playground with better technology than we have today. So we didn't have to put a camera out in the middle of the playground. It's still in the building, but the lens and all that, we can see, and we can see what they were doing. And give the proper administration the access that they need to see things that are going on, things like that. And we're looking at a couple other areas that need cameras updated and such. Our next meeting will be when we meet at the [inaudible].
Thank you. Township Board of Education Joint Committee, Mr. Sutovitch. I'm going to ask you to.
So, the Township Board of Education Joint Committee met last night, and our discussion involved delineating the respective Board of Education versus township responsibilities with regards to any possibilities for Bill Press or the Gallios Field. And primarily, discussions were involving the Highlands Regulations, Board of Education restrictions, and any funding sources that will fund the project to improve the services for our community while at the same time protecting the taxpayers. So our next meeting hasn't been announced yet. Please stay tuned.
Thank you. Westmoreford Municipal Alliance, Mrs. Van Dyke or Mrs. Dergensen?
The PALS, the PALS for Prevention was a great success, and the alliance, I believe, is planning on doing it again next year. It was a fun event, and it was very well attended. Also, on May 19, is Stop Fun Month, which is at the Westmoreford Parks and Private Building. That's all we have.
Thank you. And Special Education Parent Advice Committee, Mrs. McQuarrie, do you have anything?
So the next meeting will be May 8, here in the back of the cafeteria from 7 to 9, in-person or virtual. There will be a presentation on Transition Resources from the Division of Vocational and Rephabilitation Services.
Thank you. Old Business. Any more Business?
Move to close, Old Business.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? New Business.
Mr. Schelfels, can we have an update on the Kilgale Field, the bleachers, and the drainage there?
So, are we able to update on the drainage? Now, we've done a lot of work on the drainage over the years, and it's gotten a lot better than it used to be. As for the bleachers, we ordered new bleachers that have been, in the fall, I believe, we were ordered of. The bleachers are in. It's just the guys in our maintenance department have not had an opportunity to assemble the bleachers and to put the concrete pad down, to pour the concrete. So what they recently did was they put the old bleachers that were there, they put those back in there. This way, the spectators at the games have somewhere to sit for the time being. So it's on the docket to get the project done. It's just the guys, the weather hasn't assisted, and also maintaining all the fields, they've been doing that, they're trying to find time to pour the concrete pad and then also assemble the bleachers to try to alleviate that. We actually reached out to a couple of companies to see how much would cost to grab a company to assemble the bleachers, and the prices we got were from $13,000 and $16,000. So when we told our maintenance guys that, they laughed, and they said they could do that for, even if they did it on overtime, they can get it done for a fraction of the price. So it's just a matter of finding time to get it done. So it's just a matter of finding time for it to done, to get it done, but it's definitely on their priority list, and, but for the time being, put the old bleachers back there. And I actually went down yesterday and checked them out, and they seemed very sturdy, they're old, but they're, they're still structurally sound.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mrs. Romeo?
I have two recommendations, new business. The first is, being that this year, there's, hasn't always been a high school student to represent, I was wondering if maybe we could invite students from other schools, certain, like, it would've been nice to have a, an update, maybe from a McCaffrey student tonight, or, you know, an elementary representative to talk about things going on in their life. Do you know in other districts that a student representative is a member of the board, or not a voting member, but they say for the full meeting? And I just think it's something I'd like to discuss more in the committee, and talk about some ideas about that. And my second recommendation is, I'm not sure who else on the board is a member of the Highlander Education Foundation, but I'm willing to report on that, I think that when we have the committees and reports, the Highlander Education Foundation would be a good report for us to know of what activities and ideas they're doing. A lot of times, the annual, including his report, but I wanted to recommend that under the business, possibly one of us be the liaison, and bring back the information to us. An idea, I guess we can discuss that in operations or in committee, and I am willing to volunteer to do it, I am a member of the HAF, if someone else wants to do it, it does not have to be me, it would be just nice to have a report.
Thank you, in this committee, are you a paying member?
I am, yeah. I'm a voting member. Isn't that what I heard? Yeah, I am, I thought that it was, I work for kids, you know, I, my family are voting members, and I, I've almost been able to go to one meeting, they have meetings many. They do also have their meetings online, so you can attend virtually. I mean, I guess, you know, the whole idea of the Highlander Education Foundation, and I don't wanna speak for them at all, but it came from us. You know, like, at this table, when we were being yelled at about the budget and the cuts and the things, it was like, well, let's, let's get a community of people together where we can work with you, and, you know, and we said that, and then we don't show up. You know, so, yeah, I am a paying member, and I'm gonna support it to the end, you know, and it's supporting our children. So I'm not sure why or how or what, it is like, any, anyone else not supporting it, but I, I'm just speaking, like, saying, I think we should have a report and understand what they're doing, and let's go.
See, the only reason that I ask is, is I know there's been some conversations about whether that would be a conflict.
I would, that's what I was gonna ask.
Theo was coming though.
But I pay taxes too, and if I wanted to be a voting member on the municipal alliance, I could apply through the, you know, it's not, I mean, you can ask the attorney, I'm not an attorney, but...
But because they're going to be benefiting our schools and bringing fun...
I'm also...
Fundraising, I'm not sure if that means that you, I mean, we could always...
I've also always been a paying member, as I hope everyone else will be up to the PTA. So, and was told that I could always be a member of the PTA, paying, voting member. However, the only one thing I was not allowed to do as a board member, I was told, was collect money on the mess. So I don't see it being any different, you know, I don't know why, you know?
I think the only difference is, is they're gonna eventually bring things onto this agenda that we're going to have to approve, probably funds that they may be gifting or providing for programs.
We can discuss it, it's very much like the PTA, right? Because we vote in all of their, well, tonight, we voted in some of their activities, you know what I'm saying, that they're paying for.
I think it's a little bit different, but maybe our attorney could clarify as to, you know, the difference, or if there is any difference, but...
Did that discussion happen in operations and finance?
It has not, but we can definitely put it on the agenda.
Yeah.
Mr. Schultz, if you can put it on the agenda.
Where was the discussion, of it being a possible...
There was no discussion.
There's a discussion of it being a possible conflict of interest, that you just said there?
Just a mom, like, I think, I know that I had reached out to Mr. Brown, you know, prior to ask him, what, even with the fundraising that they were just currently doing, offering a table, like, just, like, is there any conflict between us, like, participating in something that we would eventually have to maybe vote on funds coming? So, I'm not sure.
Did I say that that was a possible conflict?
Well, that's why I asked.
Yeah, well, I'm just saying, Brown.
When you were in our committee, when you talked about the table, that was brought up then?
Well, not about being a paying member.
No, but about it being a conflict.
Yeah.
I just didn't know that, no, you just mentioned you were a paying member, that's why I just wanted to clarify, because you said that just, if you were, it doesn't, I mean, it doesn't mean anything to me, but we did speak of the conflict in the committee with the table, and I had reached out to Mr. Brown in regards to where, if there is a conflict, where it is, and he's going to get that.
Which meeting we talked about?
It was education. So it was in regards to the email that we received, Mrs. Romeo brought up about the email that we had received in regards to the fundraiser and doing a table. So she wanted to know who was going to be attending, and she offered to say...
Having a table, if numbers, you're not receiving a table.
To be right, yeah, now having a table, to be right back as a board member, to that we were not having a table?
I mean, I didn't respond, because it went to everyone, so I didn't wanna speak for the board, you should, I guess, speak for yourselves, right? Because it went to all board members and all administrators.
Anyway, two different subjects here.
We did.
Yeah, they were.
But the table, you asked if the board had responded, it went to every board member and administrator, so...
We would have to vote on it, or you have to...
No, I don't think we would have to vote, they just offered to give us a table for their fundraiser.
Yeah, but that's a little different than having a liaison.
Yes, yeah, no, that's a completely different, yeah, no, and that we've already said, we can definitely discuss it in committee, yeah.
And we have multiple, you know, like, even the municipal alliance has always discussed that, and the third program, because of the means of it, right?
I, I think, I think Will had brought it up in the past, that it should be something that comes under policy, because we do have all of those liaisons, we're adding new policy, and it follows our bottom line, and I think that that's where it would land. It should be a discussion through that, because when you start to assign a liaison, it should be part of your bottom line.
Let me add up, committee, I remember you.
Okay. Last question under new business, it's for Mr. Brown. So, this weekend, I have volunteered to, volunteer to help at their Food Truck Festival, which is raising money for our schools. I'm not touching money, I'm not collecting money, I have nothing to do with the money, but one way I might vote on where they put the money. Am I allowed to not volunteer at their Food Truck Festival?
Point of order, is this something that should be discussed in executive session for attorney-client purposes?
It could be, but I'm, it's my own personal, and I've asked it out, because if I cannot volunteer publicly, I'd like people to know I'm not volunteering, and that's where I stand. So I've asked the attorney, and if he doesn't know right now, and yes, it could have me, I could do it privately, but this is about me, as a board member here on this board, and I'm asking publicly about myself.
So I think, given Mr. Brown the opportunity to be able to look into what it is exactly, what can publicly benefit, you know, without, without him speaking to something that he really hasn't looked into.
Okay. You emailed him already about looking into membership?
I just asked him, like, you know, where, like, if we could have a table, if there was any conflict, if members...
Okay. Thank you. Hello, I just wanna support our programs and our kids every way that I can, so as being a board member, voting means that...
Yes, I have new business, and I can about it.
Thank you.
So, in the order of new business, the Westmoreford Freshman Baseball Tournament is happening in May, there are 16 teams involved, and this freshman baseball tournament is solely to fund the Ben Jerkison Memorial Scholarship, and this scholarship is awarded to a graduating senior who is moving on to college with a baseball career in mind. So, he is part of my family, and we have awarded quite a few scholarships to seniors in the past, and the final game is going to be on May 22nd at the Kilgallen Field, and I just wanna say thank you to Mr. Trent Costa and Coach Matthews for all of their hard work, and all of the participants. I know I have students of my own participating in the tournament, and some of my colleagues have their childrens participating, so the final game is gonna be at Kilgallen on May 22nd, like I said, so if you have a chance to get out and see the kids play, that'd be great, so thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Draganson. And you have the new business, yes?
So, Mrs. Lockwood gave everybody a link to the board self-assessment. I recommend that you all participate in it, because after we participate in the survey itself, we get the results back, and then have basically a small retreat to discuss those results, and I do feel it lends itself to creating a stronger board, so I hope you take part and take it honestly.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Move to close new business.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
So, the second public comments, all speakers will have five minutes to speak until a period of 30 minutes transpires. Before speaking, please state your name, group affiliation, and address for the record. Members of the public who have requested to speak prior to the meeting will be recognized by the chair first. After speaking, all speakers are asked to sign the register provided, and give their full name, group affiliation, and their address. All statements shall be directed to the presiding officer, no participant may address or question board members individually. All speakers are expected to have read the statement within the agenda regarding regulations concerning public comments. Members of the public are reminded that they are legally responsible and liable for their comments. Anyone wishing to speak?
Courtney Stevenson, 307 Ridge Road, Westmoreford, New Jersey. I'm just coming from the HAF meeting, and wasn't going to speak tonight, but in light of the conversation, I felt it important to speak. I just wanted to let you all know that our meeting was recorded tonight, and will be on our Facebook page, I can also email it to you if you would like. And there we talk about membership tonight, the reason why we have a paying membership for the integrity of our foundation, but also that members do not have to be paying to be part of our foundation. We welcome all of your support, and we look forward to our partnership together.
Thank you, Mrs. Stevenson. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Move to close public comments, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So, Mrs. Chiracano, can you adjourn the session motion?
At 9:05 PM, I move to go into executive session for the purpose of discussing personnel negotiations and matters of attorney-client privilege. The executive session minutes will not be released until such time as the privilege or confidentiality is no longer applicable. The board will be in executive session for approximately 45 minutes, action will not be taken. There should be taken, will be taken, sorry.
So we'll be returning after executive session, all those in favor?
I gotta get a sec.
Oh, sorry.
Second.
All those in... Yeah, all those in favor? And we will be returning to take action. I'd like to call the meeting back to order, roll call, please, Mr. Schultz.
Mrs. Van Dyke?
Yes, here, I'm sorry.
Mrs. Romeo? Mrs. Draganson?
Here.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Here.
Mr. Lippie?
Here.
Mr. Sotovich?
Here.
Mrs. Chiracano?
Here.
Mrs. Marklarn?
Here.
Mrs. Lockwood?
Here.
Mrs. Van Dyke, Personnel, Student Affairs?
Under Personnel, Student Affairs, number, item 67, the recommendation of the interim superintendent to approve an administrative leave of absence for employee 1170 with pay retroactive from April 18, to 20, April 18, 2024.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing non-alcoholic?
Mrs. Van Dyke?
Yes.
Mr. Sotovich?
Yes.
Mrs. Draganson?
Yes.
Mrs. Chiracano?
Yes.
Mr. Lippie?
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Marklarn?
Yes.
Mrs. Lockwood?
Yes.
I'd like to move item 68, Under Personnel, Student Affairs, the recommendation of the interim superintendent to withhold the salary and employment increment of employee 1170 for the 2024-2025 school year.
Second. That should be adjustment, employment and adjustment increments?
It should say employment, adjustment, and...
And adjustments.
Employment and adjustment increment.
Could I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing non-alcoholic?
Mrs. Van Dyke?
Yes.
Mr. Sotovich?
Yes.
Mrs. Draganson?
Yes.
Mrs. Chiracano?
Yes.
Mr. Lippie?
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Marklarn?
Yes.
Mrs. Lockwood?
Yes.
Okay, do I have a motion to adjourn meeting?
Motion to adjourn?
Second, yes.
Aye.
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
And it's 10:00 PM.